This meeting, this open.
This conference, well, this conference is no longer being recorded. This conference will now be recorded.
There we go. This open meeting of the Town of Auburn Board of Selectmen is being conducted both in person and remotely, consistent with Chapter 107 of the Act of 2022, which suspends the requirement of open meeting law to have all meetings in a publicly accessible physical, physical location. Further, all members of public bodies are allowed to participate remotely as long as reasonable public access is afforded, so that the public can follow along with deliberations of the meeting. For the public to join the meeting remotely by telephone, the number is 1-408-650-3123, an access code of 235-235-861, or the public can join via computer at www.global.gotomeeting.com/join/235235861. All supporting materials that have been provided to the members of this body are available on the town's website. The public is encouraged to follow along using the posted agenda. Permeated, permit me to confirm that all members and persons are anticipated on the agenda present and can hear me. Members, when I call your name, please respond in the affirmative. Dan Carpenter?
Yes.
Sarah Ruffley?
Yes.
Steve Chambers?
Yes.
And the chair is present. We'll now rise for the National Anthem.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic where it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Yeah, steady. Can you ride like this?
Call it too if you could mute yourself while you're not speaking. Okay. First matter on the agenda is the vote on selection of the vice chair. Do we have any nominations?
I'll vote nominate Ms. Ruffley.
And do I have a second?
Second.
We're going to do roll call votes tonight, being that Ms. Ruffley is, is remote. So, Mr. Carpenter?
Yes.
Ms. Ruffley?
Yes.
Mr. Chambers?
Yes.
And the chair is a yes, that is a vote. Congratulations, Sarah.
Thank you.
I will symbolically move down.
All right, next on to public comments, we have one, we have Dandy Largess at 39 Perry Place, wanting to speak on the matter of COVID cash. Mr. Largess, we are going to limit public comments to three minutes this evening.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. This was not a solicited conversation. I have taken upon myself, after talking to numerous towns surrounding us, Millbury, Lester, Oxford, that the emergency personnel of these towns got little bonuses for doing their jobs who are on the front lines. Some of our firefighters were seven days, some were 14 days, then they had to quarantine. The police officers were, you know, couldn't go to the buildings, the dispatchers were quarantined from the dispatches. These people deserve something out of that COVID money. They were the emergency personnel, they were on the battle lines. You've got firefighters that never seen their newborn babies until after. And I spoke to the chief on certain things, and I 100% agree to the chief, with the chief, that these firefighters couldn't even go to their part-time jobs because of this COVID. I don't think, none of us in this room ever signed up for what we dealt with in the last two years, but the ones that were on the front lines, I think need to get a little recognition and saying, hey, you know what, it's not much, how about if we toss you a little $3,000 bonus? You know, one of the other towns got a $4,500 bonus. Yes, it's their job, yes, they might have got paid, but yes, they did not see their wives, they did not see their kids. When they were not on shift, they were quarantining so they wouldn't get, infect their wives and kids, so they wouldn't come back to work and infect their fellow employees. I myself don't know if I could do a position like that, where I would be away from my family that much. I don't know, even if I signed on for law enforcement or firefighter, that, I could even do that. Those guys went ragged for the amount of time that they were in. And as a town resident, I'm kind of embarrassed so far that the town has not given them a kicker. I really am, and I would really hope that the board and town manager, assistant town manager would think about this. They're there. Every time we pick that phone up, they're there, whether it's an officer coming, or it's an ambulance coming, or if it's a house fire, they're coming. And I don't know if any of you realize what they do. Go to the fire station, talk to them, take a ride along with them, you need to see what they do. They do not get enough credit for what they do. And I hope there is consideration into doing this for our firefighters and our police offices.
Thank you, Mr. Largess. I can tell you, we do understand what the, and appreciate what the fire department does, and I'd just like to remind you, we're about 150,000 into the ARPA funds as a process to spending it, but I can tell, I can tell you that I myself have spoken to town administration and discussions have started into what can be done. It's just not necessarily ripe yet, I would say.
Yeah, there's still some research.
Yeah, so we're still looking into the matter, but I definitely, I'm with you, I agree with your statements, everyone appreciates the fire department, there's a lot of other first responders and the board of health that really worked really hard during the beginning of the pandemic as well, so expect to see a little bit more on that later, we're just looking into it to see what can be done and what's equitable.
I'll check in with you in a while.
Thank you.
Thanks.
And we've moved the agenda around a little bit, that was posted though, right? Yeah. All right, so going on to the presentation by Whitney Street Homes Builders LLC for a local initiative project for housing development at 16 Perry Place, and a potential vote to set public meeting dates. If you gentlemen could just introduce yourselves.
James Venencasa.
Steven Venencasa of Shuigun, Jim from South Grove.
And James Tatro from Asmath Land Design.
Welcome.
Thank you. So we're proposing a LIP project, a 40B project on 16 Perry Place, and tonight we have our attorney, Lou Levine, who's on Zoom meeting, James Tatro is our engineer from Asmath Land, and James and I are the principals of the company. So, we've, we've been at this process about a year now, and one of the first things was the concern about the water department, we had several meetings with the water department, we have an agreement with the water department, a letter of support which we have with us.
Did you get the presentation that, I mean, all the stuff that we sent over?
We did.
I do have another couple copies of it, to basically show the letter of support that we got from the water department, the deed and everything, showing that we have the rights to the roads, we did a copy of the plan, the traffic study memorandum.
So we've met with the DPW, we had an in-house meeting a week or two ago with various department heads, they raised a number of concerns, we've addressed most of the concerns, maybe not all of them, but most of them, we're in the process of addressing a couple more of them. We're also willing to meet and address any legitimate concerns in the neighbors also. So, we've, we've got four of these buildings that we've built already, we just got another one approved in another neighboring town, a couple towns over. Should I, should I put it closer?
If you, if you lean in a little bit, it does help a little bit.
Thank you, ma'am. Is that better? Is that good?
No, that's better.
That's as good as it's going to get, ma'am.
Okay.
And you, sorry about that.
So, we've done a number of these projects in other towns, we actually own the property here in 16 Perry Place, and we think it's, we think it's a good candidate for a 40B project, being close right off the highway, and we know we have some obstacles to overcome, but we're, we have addressed a number, a number of the obstacles that were presented to us from various town boards, and we're still working to the end to satisfy all the legitimate concerns. So, what we're proposing to a friendly 40B, and with this package, we, we would hope to meet with the selectman or a selectman, representative of the selectman, however you would prefer, however you'd like to have the process move forward. So, we'll have a brief presentation from our engineer describing the property, and then I'd like to have a brief presentation from our attorney to maybe go over some of the logistics and some of the steps to go on. So, right now we'll have James Tatro give a presentation.
Thank you. Mr. Chairman, again, James Tatro from Asmath Land Design, here representing Whitney Street Home Builders. The site is an 8.5 acre parcel at the, located at the present terminus of Perry Place, it's bounded on the easterly side by Interstate 290, southerly by land of the town, on the easterly side, excuse me, by Perry Place, the abiders Largess and Daughery, on the north side by Mills and land of the town, of the Auburn Water District. The parcel of land, again, is 8.5 acres, we previously had a, we filed a notice of intent for a potential development of just the front portion of the property, we received an order of conditions which confirms the wetland boundary in this area, and again, at the north of the site. The site also has, this, because at the north of the site is a perennial stream, you have riverfront area to the right here, you also have flood zone in this area. We would be staying out of the riverfront area, we'd be doing everything we can, we think we can do this, still respecting the town's 25-foot no disturb zone, even though in a 40B process, that doesn't have to be adhered to by the abuser. We also conducted soil tests throughout the site, and unofficial soil tests, and we found, especially in the area over here, as per the official mapping, we had fantastic sandy gravelly soils. This site is going to be a site that infiltrates all of the runoff from these buildings and from the parking area. This site is also relatively flat, such that you come in at 497, you have a brief rise in the natural grade now to 506, you go down again, and then this whole area, that's the parking area between the two buildings, two larger buildings, is around elevation 500, all of it. So we're going to be able to grade this site so that it does not have a net either cut or fill, so that it's balanced, and will not require a significant number of vehicles to the site. As Mr. Venencasa alluded, we've already had some back and forth with the DPW in regard to proving sewer capacity, and the existing line out of Perry Place actually has the capacity for a couple hundred homes in addition to this project, which is way more than it's receiving. We also have, as he alluded again, to the agreement with the water district, where they're in the process of a large project to connect to the Worcester water system and provide certainty and backup, and he has agreed with them to pay for one of the three large parts of that project. So, the site also, I should just note, we have the three buildings shown, the apartments in each of them, we had parking provided at a ratio of 1.6 per unit, and we had, we've had a little bit of back and forth with Jake Nunamacher in regard to proving fire access. Their standard template requires a 22-foot inside radius, 42-foot outside, what we showed on a separate plan was a path through here with a 35-foot inside radius and a 55-foot outside radius, and we're just going to have to refine that a little bit to prove everything to his satisfaction, but we will be able to do that. I guess I'll just leave it at that, I'm sure there's other things I could mention, but I think we can show that we're, there is adequate infrastructure for this project, and that the applicant is going to be able to do this in a fashion, again, having already proven that the wetlands will not, I think, be an issue, and that he will not have to, he will not involve excessive earth, earth moving and earthwork, and that he can do this in a fashion which has the least impacts for a project of this size on the neighborhood.
Thank you, Dennis. Thank you. Now I'd like to see if our attorney, Lou Levine, can maybe say a few words, he's on Zoom call also.
Can you hear me?
Yes, Mr. Levine, we can.
Thank you very much. This is a request for entering into a LIP application with the Board of Selectmen. And I know the board has engaged in other LIP applications, you know, relative to comprehensive What was mentioned by the engineer is that the developer is willing to enter into a development agreement to pay for or to fund this water connection to the Worcester, Worcester supply. And this would be accomplished through a development agreement between the developer and the selectmen. In the 40B process, the decision to approve or disapprove the project or condition it is up to the zoning board of appeals, and a LIP application doesn't curtail the board of appeals' power or authority. But we could enter into a development agreement that would require the applicant, he goes forward on the comprehensive permit to fund or install this water connection to sewer, I mean, to Worcester, which would not be within the province of the board of appeals. So, there's a benefit to the town, there's a benefit to the developer, we would like to do this cooperatively with the town. I'm not saying that the development agreement would be limited to just this water connection, but I think it would serve as a great part of it. And so we'd like to enter into a dialogue, to prepare the application, the board's, LIP application for the board's consideration, and to submit to the Department of Housing and Community Development. If you have any questions, let me know.
Anything else to add, Jim? So we'd like to, you know, we've worked with the various town departments, and we'd like to take the next step, is the reason for us coming here before you tonight. Questions, comments from the board members?
I had one question, you had mentioned, and it might have just been, you mentioned boards that you've met with, did you meet with boards or DCG, or have you been in front of any other public boards in town, or?
Just the department heads of, of all the, all the departments in here.
Okay.
Wasn't, wasn't planning board or zoning board?
Wasn't a public hearing, it was.
No, it wasn't a public hearing.
Okay, and so it just was.
Steve, I would just, just correct slightly that, again, we did file a notice of intent with the Conservation Commission, it was for a proposed development just of the front of the property, and, but it did confirm these wetland boundaries.
Well, the only formal board was the Conservation Commission.
And then, from the proposal, 1.6 parking per unit, how, how many units do you plan to be one bedroom, two bedroom, three bedroom?
It's 152 total units, 10% three bedrooms, 60% one bedrooms, and 20, 40% two bedrooms. Actually, it's 35, it adds up to 110, but it's.
55.
55, 35, 55, 35.
55, 35, 10 percentage.
Yeah, 55.
55.
55%. 55%, yeah, one bedrooms, 35%, two bedrooms, and 10%.
Three bedrooms.
Thank you, I'm sure we'll have more questions, but at this time, I'm good, thank you.
What percentage affordable? 25%.
25%. But because it's a, because we're, we are going to be keeping the product, the community and rental, you would get the whole, the whole credit.
For the whole?
For the whole.
152.
Yeah, it's all goes on here.
Yep.
And, possibly for Ms. Levine, the private road issue, you know, I understand rights to pass and repass, censorship or ownership to the center line, is it your position that that includes right to improve with utilities and infrastructure?
Yes, and we've submitted information, I think tile insurance, to the town, if we have the right to use it, we have the right to improve it.
Okay, and that wasn't, I saw that on Schedule B2, let's call it, that wasn't part of the actual legal description, that was just an add-on in, for the tile insurance purposes?
Yeah, it's, it's, yeah, it's easement or rights that run with the property.
Okay, all right.
That was honestly, I didn't know the answers.
That's okay.
No, we specifically asked that question about right to, because that was brought up to us, and we didn't know the correct answer, we thought we did, but we got a legal opinion, so specifically, yes, we have the right to pass, repass, and improve.
Okay, all right, yeah, I was familiar with Brennan V. DiCosta, rights to pass and repass and ownership rights, but in terms of development, that's where I wasn't sure. Okay, that's the only questions I have at this point, does town administration have any questions?
Through the chair, so our DCG did meet with Mr. Venencasa and his team, and we had also had a preliminary meeting back in January, and we had asked the developer for a municipal impact analysis that we could share with the board. So I did provide you what was sent to us on that, this was something that the board had done with Eastland Partners when we went forward on the LIP for Blaker Street, and that municipal impact analysis generally includes information on number of anticipated children in the school system, which I know was in there, costs or anticipated calls for, extra calls, fire police, just based on industry standards, impacts on stormwater, and it's really a cost-benefit analysis that is supposed to help the board.
Could you speak louder?
I'm sorry.
Ma'am, please wait, please wait to be recognized. Ma'am.
If I live, if I live on Perry Place, I would sit representing the Conde Nast.
Ma'am, you'll wait to be recognized by the chair.
I will.
Ma'am. Ms. Jacobson will speak up.
I'll speak as loud as I can, I'm sorry. Let's sort of throat here, I'm speaking as, as much as I can. So, when they met with, when we met with the group in December, the group then did come back to us with additional information, I think we were still looking for a little bit more information on the traffic analysis, I think we're looking for some more details on some of the municipal impact analysis, it didn't seem to have a lot of information, there was some information in there on schools and costs for that, but I think we're also looking for some information for police and fire and what those impacts may be on that. And certainly, you know, I know we need to give that information to the board, and we had explained that that's important for them, to make an informed decision, they need to have all the details on it. So if we could continue to work with you to get some of the information we're still waiting for, I can probably just summarize DCG's concerns, and for those who don't know, DCG is the Development Coordinating Group, and that is made up of all the department heads, it's police, fire, also our water district, even though it's not a town entity, a town administration entity, they are a town utility that we need to work with, and they're great. It also has representation from our town planner, our building commissioner, our DPW, and I don't mean to leave anyone out, but basically, it is all of the town employees that would be able to review a project and give feedback to the developer on what they may need to do before they go to the regulatory process. So, the general concerns about the DCG in the last couple weeks, and certainly, Mr. Venencasa, both of you, you could, correct me if I'm wrong, but I think the concerns were traffic, stormwater, drainage, and potentially the issue over the private road, which attorney Levine has just addressed a little bit. Still just want to be sure that there's no requirement needed, and that's, again, that's for your attorneys to show us, that there's no requirement that the abusers or the other private property owners have to do any kind of sign-off. I did read, it just came in today, this afternoon, the title report that you got, and it did say clearly in there that you seem to have the right to pass and repass and make improvements as needed. Again, I'm not a lawyer, so I'd have to take a look at it again, and the board did get that, but they didn't get it until right before this meeting, you know, maybe a couple hours ago, as soon as it went into our town planner's office, it went to the board. So, those are just some of the concerns that we have. We, in general, always want to work with the developer, if there's a development agreement, we would certainly want to identify any impacts to the neighborhood, and hopefully work with you to mitigate those impacts. I don't want to touch this because I don't want to undo it. So, our hope would be that we could address and identify some of the neighborhood impacts, and then work with you as we've done on the other LIP that we had, to work together to figure out the best mechanism to mitigate those impacts on the neighborhood, giving you every right you have to do what you want to do within the confines of a comprehensive permit, and just recognizing that the residents are also going to have concerns and impacts that we'd like to work with you to mitigate. We do have one other LIP, as you mentioned, and the board has approved that LIP, that, that process took several months, so I just, I want to be clear, it's, it's not that we're trying to postpone it, it just takes a while, because we're likely recommending to the board that they have another, at least another couple of meetings, to give the residents the opportunity to think about what they just heard tonight, absorb it, come back, and maybe ask some questions, maybe the board members are going to have some questions, so I think we'll be working with you through town administration to kind of funnel those questions to you, and then as we go through the process, have another couple of meetings where the abusers are notified again. It's not a requirement, we notified all the abusers as a courtesy, this wasn't a public hearing, it was a presentation, we just felt that they should know what's going on. And in the future, any meetings like this, we will also notify them, just to make sure that they're aware of it. So it does take a couple of meetings, it takes a few, but I think you've learned from town administration, we're willing to talk to you and learn about the project, and ask the questions that have to be asked for us to be able to give the board the information they need to make that kind of decision. So I think, to the board, I think what we'd like to recommend is that you vote to set a date where the residents who are here now, and the residents who may want to come to future meetings, will know what date that is, and put this on the agenda again for some updated information, and again, recognizing, these things take time, we want to make sure we get all the information that we can, you want to make sure you give us all the information you can, so that the board can make the decision. And then, there are two different paths here, assuming that this goes forward as an LIP, then the project will go to the zoning board of appeals as the authority over comprehensive permits. So that would be, the process would go to the ZBA, and the ZBA can put some conditions on it within reason. The other option is, this is called, as you mentioned, Ms. Venencasa, a so-called friendly 40B. The other type of 40B would be if the board did not enter into an LIP, in which case the developer would just move forward, and the town really wouldn't have any input or any opportunity to work with you, and hopefully, again, I think our goal is to mitigate any impacts on the residents. If, if this project is going to go forward in some way, we want to make sure that it's done as best as it can be done for our residents. Is that fair?
Yeah. Just to add that, excuse me, the, the traffic, and I'm lightly speaking on behalf of a lot of the residents here, I'm sure they'd be very interested to have more of a traffic impact analysis, just on the, it comes out with 290, and with the light right there, so it might create a little bit of a tough traffic pattern, I think that might be one of the larger hurdles you guys have, but, you know, otherwise, I stand by Julie's comments.
But we did have a preliminary traffic study, and we have a full traffic study is in the process, as Jim had spoken, and I could just, I just want to say that, you know, I've been doing this a long, long time, start by these gray hairs here, and every project so far we've done has been a LIP project, we have not, we work cooperatively for every town that we've proposed this type of development, so we do come forward with the best of intentions. Any further, on this fully?
For the agenda, Mr. Chair, perhaps the board, while the residents are here, could take a vote tonight to set the next date, and I know your next meeting is September 12th, and that's three weeks away, and maybe in the next. and maybe in the next three weeks, we can work with you to get a little bit more information for that next meeting.
Does that work for you guys?
Yes, I'm sorry, what was?
September 12th, it's three weeks from tonight.
Do I have a motion?
A second?
Yes. Six thirty at this point. Alright, we have a motion and a second. Again, we'll do roll call. Mr. Carpenter?
Yes.
Ms. Ruffley?
Yes.
Mr. Chambers?
Yes.
And the chair is a yes. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
We'll break for one minute if, if folks are, just were here for that one presentation. They are back in session, okay. Alright, moving on to public hearings. First one I see is we have petition by National Grid for pole locations on Tinker Hill. Do we have a representative from National Grid present?
They have been notified through the chair. Let me just see, one minute, let me just unmute a caller just in case. Maybe they tried to speak.
This is Robert Green.
Is there, is there a caller from National Grid? Can you hear?
Yes, this is Robert Green.
Welcome. Hello?
So, yeah, so the, the, you sure wrote that on schedule four right now?
You're breaking up pretty bad.
Mr. Chairman, can you hear me all right?
Yes, we can hear you now, yes.
Okay, perfect, thank you.
Yep, okay. Alright, do we have a motion to open the hearing?
So moved.
All is in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Second.
All is in favor? Aye, it is a vote. Okay. Yes, I'm sorry. Mr. Carpenter? Ms. Ruffley?
Yes.
Mr. Chambers?
Yes.
And the chair is a yes. Okay, past the technical difficulties, the floor is yours, sir. If you could introduce yourselves.
Yes, hi, Mr. Chairman, this is Robert Green representing National Grid with the Design Engineering Team.
How are you?
Good, very good, Howard.
Good. Alright, we're ready to hear you.
Sure, so this is essentially just the petition for a single pole on Tinker Hill Road. This is National Grid to install one sole-owned pole on Tinker Hill Road beginning at approximately 1,200 feet northwest of the center line of the intersection of Blaker Street, installing one new forty-foot Class II mid-band pole. This is essentially going to be numbered eighteen dash fifty to apply power overhead to a private resident across the street.
Alright, and do board members have any questions?
The placement of the pole in relation to the road, where it will be, how far off?
Did you hear that question, sir?
Yes, it was the question to the whereabouts of the pole, how far off the edge of pavement?
Yes.
So it should be no more than five feet off the pavement.
Alright, and does this pole, is this pole going to have a streetlight on it?
No, there will not be a streetlight on it unless you so deem necessary by the town.
Another question, so five feet off that road, I know that road's pretty narrow. That doesn't inhibit anything future, it's, I don't know if there's any planned expansion or pole relocation in the future. Is that taken into account, would that still, and I don't know the, sorry, it's just coming to me, I would have asked these questions earlier. I'm just, I'm just wondering where that five feet off the road, if that will still allow for future improvements of that road if we need it, or should it be further in or further out, I don't know.
I know that with the distance that we have per the right-of-way that the town owns, we can't go too far off of the edge of pavement due to, of course, property rights, private property rights. So if there was a case where the road did to be expanded, let's say, we would, we would address that as it comes and we can move the pole if necessary.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
And with that, do we have a motion?
Mr. Chairman, we should ask for abutters first.
Yes. Do we have any abutter comments or questions? Seeing none, do we have a motion?
Motion to close the hearing. Second.
Mr. Carpenter?
Yes.
Ms. Ruffley?
Yes.
Mr. Chambers?
Yes.
And the chair is a yes. Do we have a motion to approve or deny?
We'll make a motion that we approve the request. Second.
And Mr. Carpenter?
Yes.
Ms. Ruffley?
Yes.
Mr. Chambers?
Yes.
And the chair is a yes, it is a vote. Thank you, sir.
Thank you so much, Chairman, have a great evening, support, thank you.
Thank you. Moving on to Wagner Motorsports International LLC, applications for motor vehicle Class I Motor Class Vehicle, or One, excuse me, Motor Class Vehicle Two, and auto repair licenses at 460-480 Southbridge Street in Auburn, Mass. And do we have a motion to open the hearing?
Second.
Second, Mr. Carpenter?
Yes.
Yes.
Mr. Chambers?
Yes.
And the chair is a yes. Do we have a representative from Wagner Motorsports International? You're welcome to join us up here. Good evening.
Wagner President. I'm sure, I mean, we've basically gone through the Zoning Board of Appeals and also the Planning Board. So our really, our next step is actually applying for the license. So we put in the application, we met with the heads of all the different boards and departments, and, you know, we got everybody's feedback, which we're working on right now, and we just appreciate the support, and hopefully you guys will support us on this license, so.
Questions from the board members?
I'm assuming all the requirements have been met from the other boards. I didn't watch those meetings, but.
The chair, there is. And as with the other applicants, as long as they obtain all the necessary inspections from town departments, boards, and those unnecessary state agencies, as well as they were looking for adequate access on site for emergency vehicles, that would be through our Public Safety Subcommittee of the DCG per se. And you've gone to, did you mention that you have gone to a board or commission of the planning board?
We've already gone through the planning board, we're fine, and also the Zoning Board of Appeals, so we're in great shape.
Do we have any questions? Abutters? Seeing none. Yes.
You're taking over the Accura dealership, is that correct? No, it's two buildings to the north. Where, where the, the old Staples was at, where the Ready Med is, in that area.
Thank you. Do we have a motion? To close?
Second.
Mr. Carpenter?
Yes.
Ms. Ruffley?
Yes.
Mr. Chambers?
Yes.
And the chair is a yes. And do we have a further motion?
Make a motion that we approve the licenses with our normal language attached.
Mr. Carpenter?
Yes.
Ms. Ruffley?
Yes.
Mr. Chambers?
Yes.
And the chair is a yes, it is a vote. Congratulations, sir, thank you.
Appreciate it.
Now the jumping around, let me see if I did this right.
I think it was one more change of, yeah, one more hearing, sorry.
And moving on to the last public hearing of the evening, Change of Manager Ninety-Nine Restaurants of Boston LLC at 793 Southbridge Street in Auburn. And first of all.
Hello, my name's Alexia Renaud, and I'm here, oh, sorry.
Motion to open, sir. Second.
Mr. Carpenter?
Yes.
Ms. Ruffley?
Yes.
Mr. Chambers?
Yes.
And the chair is a yes. Put the procedures out of the way, you may introduce yourself and begin.
My name's Alexia Renaud, and I recently became the new general manager at the Ninety-Nine. So I just am here to have my name replace the previous general managers on the liquor license.
Do we have any questions of the board members? Questions from the abutters? And do we have a motion?
Motion to close. Second.
Mr. Carpenter?
Yes.
Ms. Ruffley?
Yes.
Mr. Chambers?
Yes.
And the chair is a yes, and we'll entertain another motion.
Change of manager. Second.
Mr. Carpenter?
Yes.
Yes.
Mr. Chambers?
Yes.
And the chair is a yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. It's actually really next to mine. I see, there's no communications. And moving on to Select Board General items, we have interview and potential vote to appoint Zoning Board of Appeals Associate Member. And everyone was provided the application of, and resume for Ryan Garabedian.
Through the chair, if I may add, that Mr. Garabedian, he applied to be on a couple of different boards and commissions and just said wherever the need was greatest, and we felt the ZBA really needed to have an alternate member, just to make sure that we always ensure a quorum, and that we're getting our new members trained, so they're ready to go when we need permanent, you know, full, full members. So Adam Menard and I, the town planner, had interviewed Ryan, actually, we were very impressed with him. He seems like he would be. So his application is in your packet, and per your policies, you generally ask the applicant a couple of questions before making a decision. So, hi Ryan, thank you for logging in.
Hi, thanks, thanks for having me.
Ryan was, I gave him the option of participating remotely or coming in. He is, he's going through orientation at law school, is that it?
Yes, I'm in Boston right now, I had orientation all day, so I can get there incredibly. I'm glad to be here remotely.
It's a poor life decision, Mr. Garabedian. Okay, do we have any questions of the board members?
Actually, the policy has the chair ask the first two. It would be in the policy book that you were given. Rather repetitive, but it's basically why are you interested, and I forget what special skills you have or something. It's usually included in our packet.
Yeah, so the question was, why am I interested in ZBA?
Uh, yes, the, so what is your interest in serving on the ZBA?
Yeah, of course, so right now I'm a town meeting member, and I want to keep giving back to the town. I've been a lifelong Auburn resident, and I want to see Auburn move forward. I, I feel like we have a very unique position, and I want to, I want to help lead that.
Excellent.
Through the chair, if I may interrupt for a minute, I'm sorry, we did invite the chair of the ZBA to participate in this, and I believe he was potentially calling in, so I don't know if Bob Tedrow is on the line or not, so. It doesn't look like it, I'm not seeing any additional callers there, but just in case someone logged in, I just wanted you to know it was the chair of the ZBA.
I did refer to Mr. Tedrow as well. And do you have any special experiences or skills that will enhance your appointment?
Yeah, so not exclusive of ZBA, but I just finished an internship with the town administrator of Plainfield, Brian Mogle. So I have quite, quite an inside view of government from that internship, especially municipal government. So I feel like I'm a unique position because of that right now.
And do you have any time constraints that would affect your attendance at scheduled meetings or any additional meetings as needed?
Uh, no, this is the only one that I have right now, unfortunately, but my school schedules, I'm, I have to be fine with meeting their regular Thursday meetings.
Alright, and do any board members have any particular questions? You are limited to two questions.
More of a procedural question, but was, I know the chair of the board was provided the information or an opportunity. The other members of the board, are they aware of this as well, or?
That's, per our, per the board's policy, we generally notify the chair of the board member.
Well, I appreciate anyone that's willing to volunteer their time to support the town, so I have no further questions.
Ms. Ruffley, any questions?
Uh, no, I agree with you, and I appreciate anybody that's willing to support the town.
I would just add that I've had the pleasure of meeting you, Mr. Garabedian, but I've heard very good things from people in town, so I do look forward to meeting you.
Thank you, and I look forward to meeting you too.
With that, do we have a motion? We will need a motion to appoint Mr. Garabedian as an associate member for a term expiring June 30th, 2024.
So moved.
Second.
Second, Mr. Carpenter?
Yes.
Ms. Ruffley?
Yes.
Mr. Chambers?
Yes.
Chair is a yes. Congratulations, Mr. Garabedian.
Thank you.
I, through the chair, I, we had asked him to move this up, but I do see, excuse me, I do see Sin Carey, who I believe is with the Friends of the Auburn Public Library, on for the next item that's in order, so you may wonder, yeah, maybe keep that right now. It shouldn't take too long.
Moving on to change of date on the open air license issued to the Friends of Auburn Public Library for a book sale at the library parking lot August 20th to September 7th, uh, seven, excuse me, September 17th, 2022. And Ms. Carey, you with us?
I am.
So, and I can certainly speak for them, and Sin, if you'd like to add anything, please do. We had told them that we didn't think it was necessary for them to come, but we appreciate her coming onto the call. This is just a change of date, the board had initially approved of, I think, two or three different dates, and they'd like to move one of those dates from your original approval of August 20th to September 17th. My understanding was this, they're just concerned about having events like that in the summer. Number one, with the heat that we've been having, and number two, just a lot of people are away. So this is just a request to change one of the dates.
Any questions from the board members?
I have, as, as the library director on board with us, we usually get a letter from her saying that it's, it's okay to have an event at the site.
Through the chair, the library director was fine with the change.
Ms. Ruffley, any questions?
No, I'm good, thank you.
Alright, with that, I'll need a motion to approve or deny the request for a date change to September 17th, 2022.
Motion to approve the, the request to change the date. Second.
Second, Mr. Carpenter?
Yes.
Ms. Ruffley?
Yes.
Mr. Chambers?
Yes.
And the chair is a yes, that is approved. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Looking for a motion to move up Agenda Item 7D, the update on the Public Safety Facilities Advisory Committee.
Second.
Mr. Carpenter?
Yes.
Yes.
Mr. Chambers?
Yes.
And the chair is a yes. We want to that agenda item next, and I believe we have our Chief of Police here and Mr. Kennedy to speak on that.
Uh, through the chair, however, I thought, if you want, Mr. Kennedy is the chair of the Public Safety Facility Advisory Committee, he's welcome to come up, and we also have the Fire Chief and the Police Chief are both here. I, I can just give a summary, if that's okay, and Kevin, if you want to add anything to it. So the Public Safety Committee met about a month ago. So the Public Safety Committee met about a month ago. And they took, they took a two-part vote, really. One part was to pursue a joint public safety complex at number five to seven West Street on current townhome land where the fire secondary station is located now along with the school department administration building. And to put a joint police-fire facility there. Retain the operations of a fire secondary station at what is now currently a fire headquarters at Auburn Street. So keep that building there, keep an operation going there, but move the headquarters to the new facility at five to seven. The other part of that vote, and this was after a lengthy discussion about the layout. The facility can fit on that site. It would be better situated if there was direct access to Southbridge Street. And working with town council and the committee, we looked into whether we could, under chapter thirty B, use a sole, what they call a sole source, being able to directly negotiate if there's only one parcel that meets the needs of the town. And there is only one parcel that would meet the needs of the town as far as giving access to an egress from the site on and off of Southbridge Street. And that would be the property that is owned by the Perro family, the former Perros Auto. So under chapter thirty B and with concurrence of town council, town council believes that it absolutely does qualify as a sole source, meaning we can directly negotiate, approach them and see if they're even willing to sell. They did just enter into a lease, as you know, because you gave a license for a business there. So I did reach out to the owner of, of, one of the family members, anyway, from Perros. And I should say sadly, one of the owners recently passed away. So that, I believe, probably led to them going into a lease for the property. Oh, there we go, I came back. So I, I did reach out to the owner last week and asked if they would be willing to entertain a discussion with the town, recognizing that they are in a lease. We're not asking or looking to break any lease with anyone, but would they be interested in having a further conversation? And they said that they would be interested in that conversation. Doesn't mean they're willing to sell, doesn't mean we're able or willing to purchase. It just means we can have that conversation with them. And again, it's a, it is a three-year lease with an option to purchase at the end of that lease. So that is, in a nutshell, that would be the direction that we'd want to go into now. Both the police chief and the fire chief strongly feel that this is an excellent choice of a site. The fire chief, if I can speak to him, feels that this site actually, when you get into more details, probably works even better having the two different sites rather than the single site in a central location. Just to update the board, we did go out a second time for an RFE to see if any property owners would be willing to sell to us, and we got no responses to that. So our options, while limited, I believe this is still a very good option. So the committee voted to support coming, having me come to the board to ask for your support to pursue this course of action. So that's the, the basic summary, Kevin, is there anything I missed?
I think that's, through the chair, that's, that's pretty much where we were at. You know, we spent a considerable amount of time. Certainly COVID slowed us down a little bit. But, you know, looking at the facilities and then we sort of, as a group, made the recommendation that we look at a single public safety facility, looking for a central location. That didn't come to fruition. Julie said, you know, we even requested that they go back out, again, to put it back out, to see if there were anybody that was interested. And we didn't get that. So I think this recommendation for the West Street headquarters, if people will call it, we are police and fire headquarters, retaining the current fire headquarters as, as a substation is a, is a great alternative. And, you know, our preferred is to look at that. Hopefully, the town will look to acquire that site because I think as the, the committee envisioned was having a, a nice front-facing entrance on Southbridge Street with the apparatus base for the fire, et cetera, coming out onto West Street and utilizing the existing traffic signals and whatnot would be ideal. So, yeah, after some, you know, considerable early days of touring buildings and getting a perspective on how things come to be. And I think as the fire chief would also support, you know, in, in hindsight, as we look at this, the location of having fire apparatus, having quick response. The police chief would say, you know, his crews are out in their sectors and can be anywhere they need to be. But the fire apparatus rolling out, they really need to be close to where they, where the, you know, and it has insurance implications for taxpayers, depending on where things are. And now, you know, I understand there's a couple, you know, one that was before you tonight has a potential facility for some increased housing development on one end of town, which would be the existing fire headquarters. And then, you know, the other one that is scheduled or in process down the, the west end of town. So, you know, I think this proposal is the best for the town now and for the long term.
Through the chair, if I may, I also, I was remiss. I wanted to acknowledge the presence of deputy chief Glenn Johnson, who is here also. And, and deputy chief Johnson was also a member, is also a member of the Public Safety Committee. And that committee has about nine members. It's a large committee made up of all, all residents and deputy chief Johnson is a resident as well. But it was nice because we had representation from fire, representation from police and a number of residents who hadn't been involved previously, who got involved in this process. So I just want to make sure we thank all of the committee members for all the time that they put in. It's been a good couple of years. And again, slow down with COVID. A couple of things I would just add. So the next step would be that, under the current contract that we have with Tekton, which is a consultant, there is still funding to do a final conceptual design, which will give us a little bit more updated and better cost as well. We only want them to do one design, we don't want them to do two because it would cost extra money to do that second one. So we would need to know if we're able to move forward on a purchase of the adjacent property, a budding property. And that would dictate what the concept design would be. So if we are able to acquire a parcel that would give access and egress off of Southbridge Street, which as Kevin mentioned, would be, that would be primarily for the police operations part of it, so the public could come in and out easily off of Southbridge Street and get into the police department. Fire would continue to use the West Street side. I think there'd be some other options for you to also use Southbridge Street, obviously. So based on upcoming conversations with the property owner, once we determine whether they're able to sell, willing to sell, and what the cost of that would be, which that always has to be done by, as we know from acquiring the land for the middle school on West Street. We also had to get appraisals, so we have to get a couple of appraisals. So if, there is a process to it. Once that is determined that we can go forward with that, we will go forward with the design, depending on whether it's the existing site or it's facing South, Southbridge with that site. After that, we'd start the outreach and education process with the residents because at that point we would have conceptual designs, we'd have updated costs. And, you know, unfortunately, the costs have gone nothing but skyward over the last couple of years. COVID's made it worse, of course, and then the supply chain issues and those, those costs are higher. So we've got to get a better handle on that so then we can go to the public and explain what those costs are. And, and I would temper that by saying, while the costs of construction have gone up, so have the costs of repairs. So all of the things that are wrong with both of these buildings that we know are wrong with the buildings, that we need to continue to pump money into, we now have to pump more money into because the costs have gone up. So it's gone up on both sides. So I think it behooves us to move forward and make a determination, if this project is going to take place, we should move forward on it. So if it is, and we have the conceptual designs, it would go to a vote for a de exclusion vote. And it would then also need a vote of town meeting to authorize the ballroom for it. So there are quite a few steps ahead of us, but we're here this evening to tell you what the committee was recommending. We a hundred percent concur with the committee. We think it's a good recommendation. We'd like to pursue this. We've invested a lot of time and energy into it as well as the, the cost of the Tekton study. So I think this is the next logical step. Ed, do you have anything to add on that?
No, and I, I think as a result of at least maintaining a presence that is where, on Auburn Street, it may reduce the footprint of the original concept of the building because some of the apparatus are now going to be housed on Auburn Street. So what the cost reduction will be, although building costs have gone through the roof, as Julie has indicated, whether that's a direct offset or not, we don't know. And I think that's why we need to, to move forward and at least through, through, through a vote of the board, it will allow us to put a, a, a number on the project once the, the architect can, can design a building that meets the needs of the town.
Do you have any questions from the board members? Mr. Chambers?
So if we vote to proceed with negotiations on that, then you come back and ask for the funding if something goes forward or?
So any negotiations would be contingent upon a vote of town meeting and the voters to have the funding. So we could negotiate, we could come to an agreed-upon price, but would always be conditional upon getting approval to actually spend those dollars and have the authorization to do that. It, it is definitely a complicating factor, but without knowing the price of the acquisition, you can't go to town meeting for a vote of approval. So we're looking for your support tonight to continue having those conversations. As I said, I just had a preliminary conversation last week just to see if they're interested in even talking. If they had said no, that would be the end of it. We're not going to pressure anyone to do something they're not comfortable with. It's just a conversation. But I would think that over the next month, we'd be able to figure out if they're willing to sell, if they are, I know for sure, it can't be before three years. But that timing could work out, you know, by the time you go and get all your approvals, that timing could actually be beneficial to the town.
Yes, so with the appraisal, are, is the town allowed to overspend on that? Like, I, I don't know how that, that piece works, but if they're asking for astronomical numbers, that appraisal kind of means nothing, and if they have someone else who's willing to overpay. Like where, where do we say, okay, this is too cost prohibitive?
So you almost have to, if I may, through the chair, you almost have to bundle this all up together and get all the necessary votes before you, before you take that first step. You know, you need a series of votes that'll have to go before the voters. And then you'll need, subsequent to that, you'll need a town meeting vote to authorize different pieces of the project that will allow you to, to enter into negotiations with a, a potential purchase of property. You cannot exceed the amount that town meeting has authorized. So maybe up to a sum of money, and you can't exceed that amount of money. So if that were the case, we could purchase it for the value that town meeting has voted. And that would be maybe a pro tanto award. And then the owner of the property has three years to challenge that, that, that price.
How impactful is it to have that second or main entrance on Southbridge Street? Does that impact the, I know we haven't fully designed it, but obviously the, the group feels it's very important, which is why you're here. But does that make the building eighty percent less useful? Or is it like five percent?
I think the, the chief can speak to it. I mean, I, people speak to the details of it, but, you know, I think the architect's saying they can fit it on that property. I think there was many people on the committee that didn't want to see what happened with the, the police station, you know, put it on a parcel that, you know, you, you run out of elbow room, you know, day two. So I think that was a concern. And certainly, I, I think, you know, as a taxpayer and you're going to put, invest in a, a facility, ideally you want it to show and represent the town well and not sort of be tucked, you know, tucked behind on a side street. But, you know, the architects did say, you know, it, it would fit that property. Chief, I'll let you sort of answer more to that.
Sure. You know, I think when the committee first started meeting, believe it or not, it's been four years since the committee got together. The side, the, the topic of adequate space was, was really at the forefront of this project from the beginning. And, you know, we always used to talk about, you know, stuffing ten pounds of stuff into a five-pound bag. And we really wanted to try to avoid that. As Mr. Kennedy mentioned, the architects are telling us that on the existing West Street site, it can be done. It means going up versus going out. So we may be looking at, and we don't know, we may be looking probably at a minimum of three-story building, but possibly a four-story building in, in order to reduce the footprint. But I think what, what at least concerns me the most about doing it on the West Street site, if for some reason we were not able to obtain property on Southbridge Street, is you just have to look at, at the current operations. You know, you, you have a very busy police department, a very busy fire rescue department, and now you're, you're putting those two entities together. There's a lot of moving vehicles, there's a lot of moving traffic. So, and again, you're talking about bigger vehicles, you know, fire vehicles, ladder trucks. The smaller the footprint, that is the part that concerns me the most just in terms of turning radiuses and just activity on a process. Even though administratively and, and base space, we can pop it on. You know, we're merging, you know, we're merging two different businesses, if you will. So two different publics, two different sets of employees. So parking becomes an issue. So it certainly gives us more breathing room. If you were to look at sort of the aerial view of the property by looking at the Perro site and McCoy's Action Karate, which was right next door, they actually just closed. Lux Auto has taken over both of those buildings. So that, that property, those two forward-facing properties of Southbridge Street above the West Street site, just being able to spread out the project by having sort of the main administration building, you know, offset a little bit towards Southbridge Street. So it's, we're reducing some traffic coming onto West Street as far as guest traffic. So you're able to turn directly off of Southbridge Street into the parcel. That's where the main entrance for the entire building. And then sort of picture like a wing with the apparatus base sort of behind that coming off onto West Street. It almost puts, although on the same property, because we're able to spread it out, it just gives everybody a little more breathing room so it doesn't appear that we're on top of each other as much as we can. You know, listen, at the end of the day, if for some reason a, a Perros deal can't be met, you know, we know the project can be done, is it ideal? It, it's not ideal, it's not how we would want to see it. I think at the end of the day, we would all wish we had more breathing room on the property if, if that doesn't come to fruition. But I think everybody on the committee feels, and I know I can speak for the police chief as the, you know, on this issue, is I think we should at least try. We should try to, you know, we're, we're designing a building here that's going to be a sixty, seventy, you know, if you look at the case of West Street, you know, a seventy-five-year project here possibly. I think we should try, knowing that that's the best option in order to get the best project we can. If it doesn't work, you know, it, it doesn't work. But I would just be hesitant to, when you're looking at a project of this magnitude, to try to save, you know, you know, a few million dollars off of, off of a project of this magnitude because we didn't want to enter into negotiations. I just, you know, I would be hesitant against that.
Thank you. And Ms. Roofley, any questions?
No, thank you.
Last meeting, we had the, the presentation put on. Kind of a little alarming to me that you're so short-staffed, especially on the ENT side. If you didn't get the Perros, I mean, and I, I mean, we're not going to outgrow, based on the fact that we may have to enlarge in the police department with aging baby boomers, fire departments, excuse me, with aging baby boomers and the more population of these projects coming in. Do you have concerns about that?
Well, a-again, I think not only when we're talking about land and having some breathing room there, you know, I, I can't sit here and forecast what this agency is going to look like fifty years from now. Because I'll be honest with you, if, if the chief's in my position, you know, if, if chief Murray or if chief Budrow was sitting here fifty years ago, I don't know that they could have really forecasted what this agency was going to look like today. So that's, it's very difficult. But I think when you're going into a project like this, we have to just look at history, we have to look at mistakes that other communities have made with dramatically undersizing buildings to try to cut costs here and there. And that ultimately winds up costing the community more down, down the road. So I think we are all trying to be reasonable when we think about future growth. And, and I can tell you, that was even difficult for me. I went into this project thinking, when we, four years ago, when we did the, I forgot what the, what the exercise was called, the, sort of the, the program. We, when we had to do a program of the building. I went into the exercise, like I woke up that morning and I said, okay, I'm gonna, I'm gonna think about fifty years from now. And going through the program, I went home that night and I'm like, I did exactly what I said I wasn't going to do. And I talked about the operation of today. And I talked about the operation of today. And then I had to go back and sort of amend our part of the program because we're so in tune of thinking about what we need right now, especially for things that we don't have. It was hard to think about what we possibly are going to need twenty to thirty years from now. But I think it's important for everybody to understand, and I know this becomes a trap because I've seen other communities face this issue. I, I, you read about it in the paper when people say, well, why do you need that? You know, we're not doing that now. We have to take into consideration that we are designing buildings for fifty, sixty, seventy years from now. We don't know what that's going to look like. So the buildings will certainly be designed with growth in mind. At a minimum, what the staffing study recommended, but probably a little bit beyond that as well. So that's something that absolutely is critical in a project like this.
And lastly, just thank you for the entire public safety committee for all the work you've done. I know you've been beaten for a number of years, so I do appreciate that. Any further from comments? And what are you, what are the, oh, excuse me, Mr. Kennedy?
I'm the only one who's actually been here for the whole four years. And you're the only one who's permitted a public safety building in the last fifty years. So more questions for the future, which is, so we, we go into the negotiation, Lux just moved their operation, much like eminent domain. Are we going to have to pay them? Well, let me start an easy question. What's the timeline for this? So we're probably looking at local town meeting in May next year for this or what is the?
That would be the hope, but it all depends on if we go into negotiations with the property owner, how long those negotiations would take, how long it would take to get the appraisal, with the goal being that we'd like to go to the voters in May and to town meeting also in May, two weeks later. But to answer your question, well, I'll, I'll let you.
So, I mean, we're, it almost sounds like the CFO is talking about where we're going through a similar process to eminent domain, where, where we do our reviews and they have three years in which they can come and say, you didn't give us enough, which, you know, I can understand if I owned a piece of property, I wouldn't necessarily be obviously thrilled.
Actually, through, through eminent domain, that's the process. But a direct negotiated sale, there's no, the sale is final. Once you do the sale, that is a, a final amount. But as far as relocations, relocations are required under eminent domain. That would be a conversation we would have to have with the owners. That wouldn't be the town's responsibility. We will be looking to just outright purchase. I don't know what the lease looks like with Lux. I don't know what types of arrangements we have. Those are all the things we have to find out. It is a business, we want to keep them here in town. So, you know, I, I don't know what the lease specifies as far as the property owner ending the lease, given where the first refusal. I, I don't know any of the details of that. But I would think that the town would want to put our hand out to assist the business, regardless of whether there was a legal requirement to do so or not, and at least finding another location for them.
Yeah, I'm just concerned about the overall cost because that's going to, they just moved their entire operation to a new location. So, you know, I'm, I'm thinking that's going to be a substantial amount of money and.
For the chair, it's a great question. It's something we won't know until we enter into conversations and see what the lease is all about.
So my concern is nobody's talked about eminent domain. I haven't heard the committee discuss it, and you might have discussed it when you weren't on TV in the initial sessions. To me, I think eminent domain is important for a couple of reasons. We have to start thinking about the future of the town buildings, not just a building. We can't just think about what fire and police need, as urgent as that may be at the moment. But what does town hall need? What does D P W need? And I think we cheat ourselves if we don't look at properties in town that are for sale currently, that we might have to go through eminent domain to acquire so that we have for future development. Because as we all know, Ayandole's used to be part of the high school complex. We sold that in the sixties. And to the chief's point, I'm sure the people in nineteen sixty whatever didn't have any idea that at some point they might outgrow what they thought was this huge school. But we find that. So I would be very remiss in not saying that I'm uncomfortable with choosing West Street without at least going the route of what are we losing? I think it's great that you guys will have what you need, but I'm concerned about the other elements in town that I think in the very near future, we are going to need to start looking at the buildings. Plus, keeping fire down there, looking at the program and at the studies and, and the, the kind of changes that they're going to need in order to have clean spaces and everything else are, what's the cost on that? Is that actually even what we want for them at this time? Is it even possible for that building to be retrofitted as a nineteen sixty odd building? And the reality is, I don't think any of us want any of our staff to get cancer because they happen to be going to conflagrations and God knows what else. So that's another concern that I have at the back of my mind. What's going to have to happen to that building if we keep that building as a functioning fire station? So that we can actually say to the firefighters who work there that it's safe? Because I know they've worked at West Street, I used to have lunch in the room that they now have for thirty plus years run, you know, a fire service. So I, I don't want them getting cheated out of that either, for those people getting sitting, having to be stationed there. And they may have less than because we're taking this huge leap. So that's where I kind of stand on these things is, you know, I'm concerned for the future. I am concerned also for that building that we have sitting down there and what that has. The impact, we just spend a lot of money to improve down there. We're trying to make that the town center. If we need to make changes to that building, how does that change that? You know, and these are all questions that I have that I don't expect you to answer right now or anybody to answer right now. But I just wanted to get those out and on the record so that we can have those answers or I can have those answers. I don't know if anybody else is.
Chair, I can try and, because a lot of those discussions did occur. At one point, we did talk about, you know, the Ayandole's site and acquiring that and utilizing the front piece for public safety. And then the school department being able to retain the back because we know at any given moment that property can be sold and high school parking will become even more of a challenge than it is now. But I think the thing we realized most as a committee was, there's not a lot of land in town. And you're, you are, you're correct in terms of long-term planning and things of that nature. You know, as Joy Square comes together, the retention of that, that facility, and I think the chief can talk about how existing headquarters space probably can be, we will, could be reprogrammed down the road to create those barrier spaces for, to make it a, you know, completely safe environment for those firefighters assigned there. But it, it is a, it is a conversation, it's not something that was not glossed over by the committee in the, in the time we did. There was a, a push at one point for the Yankee drummer, the Lowe's site. But the price tag that we were hearing was gonna, would, we'd all just walk out of this room right now. It, it was a huge number. So that eminent domain process was going to be lengthy and probably not palatable to anybody based on, on the price. So I, I certainly do appreciate the concerns relative to land. And I, I don't think, you know, for us, residents in town really start thinking back to what we have left in terms of schools. It is something that should probably be forecast and looked, you know, look for the future. But there were some unique things relative to this project, relative to things I learned about, you know, federal grants relative to where you are in a flood zone and how much improvements you could do to certain buildings. And, you know, there was a lot of restrictions that came towards a public safety facility that may not be the same for a municipal building or a, even a school for that matter. So while this isn't ideal, you, you, you're correct. And chief, when you're talking about looking forward, the one thing that is not going to be more of on the next go around fifty, seventy-five years for our, you know, our, our kids to look at is, there won't be more land. If anything, you know, that we, we'd kick ourselves, I think, for that one parcel not to enter into negotiations. The law does allow for this, you know, little tweak that doesn't put us into that contentious eminent domain. Because I don't think even residents and taxpayers like to hear that term. I think they, they feel that's sort of a, you know, a violation, if you will. But this, this one process to at least enter into discussions with this property owner, it's adjacent to our, you know, existing piece of property. And I think as we, if, if, if the board so chooses and we go forward and start to market it to the town, I think there is, there are answers to some of the questions that they're going to have that there weren't in the past through high schools. And what's this parcel going to be used for? What are we going to do with this? I think a lot of those things sort of resolve on what the, the plan sort of looks like for this project. While not ideal, it wasn't exactly, like I said, initially that committee, we wanted a, one single central, efficient public safety complex. And we quickly realized, not quickly, it took a long time. The property just wasn't there. And the places we thought, we thought pieces of the mall, we thought, you know, the, the water department was the, the wells and the, again, the, the aquifer and the, the floodlands, they, they just didn't come together. But I think this proposal is a, is a, is a good proposal. It's a good long-term proposal for the town, benefits the residents and the, the folks in the public safety very well.
So the Lowe's site would be prohibited for those reasons. I wouldn't recommend the water district site for a lot of reasons. But with the Lowe's site, I would think the mall in that it's basically a pond that we filled in or someone filled in at one point would probably have an issue. But I would think the Lowe's site, AKA the Yankee drummer site, would be adequate. And just like building costs, land isn't going to go down. And what is the cost going to be if we let the Lowe's site get developed? And then we say, oh, that's the only logical place to build it. So those are my concerns, those remain my concerns going forward with this. And, you know, obviously it's up to the board what they would like to do.
Just a follow-up on two of Mr. Carpenter's questions. You know, I, I, the committee, myself, the police chief, we all shared those exact concerns that you just said. I mean, nothing that you just said was, was not mentioned at a, at a public safety meeting. You know, I've been the chief for eleven years and, and I've never come before this board or any board in this town unless I feel like I truly need something. And when we looked at the Yankee drummer site, we always have, you know, town administration, the police chief and I, fiscal responsibility is at the top of our list. And when you look at, first and foremost, the property owner doesn't want to sell. So it would have to be an eminent domain taking. And when you look at what the assessed value, or I should say, what the value of that property would be in an appraisal, and then you have to tack on what the additional percentages will be in an eminent domain battle. I'll be quite honest with you, from my perspective, it's not a number that I could support. It's not a number that I would feel comfortable walking into a town meeting and trying to sell to the residents of this community. It's too much. And I just, you know, we're trying to get a project completed. And to walk in with what I would anticipate, and again, this is just me personally, what I would anticipate as a double-digit land number, it's not something I can do. In my mind, it's just not responsible and it's not going to make this project get to the finish line. So for me, that was the reason why I could not support an eminent domain chase, at least for that specific property. I, I just didn't feel it was responsible, but that was a personal feeling for me. The second, to the second point is, the strategy for headquarters is, you're absolutely right. There is some work that needs to be done at the headquarters station in order to get that up to speed, where it would need to be from, from a safety perspective. But if you're familiar with the inside of that building now, when you walk into the front lobby and you have the administrative area where Mo sits, and then that entire stretch straight back between the conference room, the deputy's office, my office, with administration moved out of that building, that allows that entire section from the front to the back to be gutted out, to create those clean spaces that we needed between the outside wall and the apparatus floor, and then put in some of the additional. But I think the advantage to this plan is, and I had talked about it once with the CFO, that's not, I don't even know, and we'll have to talk to the architects a, a little more to get a number on it. But I think a lot of the work in there that needs to be done, that's something that could be programmed over a period of time in the C I P. And at least on that lower level on the administrative side, there's a lot of work there that the D P W facilities could do. So I, we're not even really interested at this point in tacking on another one or two million dollars onto a project for a renovation of that other building. Because the things that we need there in some, some cases outside the safety issues, you know, we need some updates on the floors, we need some new garage doors, you know, we need new windows. Those are all things that can be programmed over a period of time, I think, a little more fiscally, you know, so we're able to do it through C I P. So I don't have, I think the safety issue, to Mr. Carpenter's point, is the number one priority that we would need to address in there. But I think that that's all stuff that can be easily programmed over a period of years in the C I P. And I, and I think we would be okay.
Mr. Chambers?
So a timing question, if we were to approve the ability to negotiate tonight, when, when do you anticipate needing to do final design? I know it's like a, you know, the whole process takes some time. But if we were to approve it, and then are we still on track for May? Or are we designing on something that we still don't own or potentially won't own? And then do we need to go back and redesign if we can't make that negotiation?
We would not go forward with the design until we knew that we could go forward with the purchase. Because we, as I said, we want to have one design. You know, if, if something happened midstream beyond our control, then we would have no choice. But that's not our plan. Our plan would be, we wouldn't give the architect the authorization to go forward with the design until we knew what we were designing for.
Yeah, that would be correct. Certainly, I think the chief had indicated that we cannot do both options at this point because there's not enough money. We'd have to go back to town meeting. That's just going to delay things. But I just want to make it clear, my, my comments relative to a pro tanto award, in no way insinuated that's where we wanted to go. I think we all are supporting a negotiated sale, if possible. But I think we heard, we don't want to, we don't want to be shorthanded either. And I, I, all I'm saying, anytime you're talking about a, a land acquisition, that's one option. And I think we're all hopeful that we have a negotiated sale. There was really no talk about a, a eminent domain taking. But certainly, I think we heard from the chief and from Kevin on some of the deficiencies as a result of going up rather than out and some of the spatial issues that we would have to contend with, so.
So I think tonight, I think it would be helpful for us if we had maybe a vote of the board to authorize me to enter into more conversations with the owner. I, I said, I did an initial conversation. I wanted to be honest and let him know that this was going to come up tonight. I didn't want to hear about it through another mechanism. So, but that was really a preliminary conversation, and they're certainly willing to sit down and have further conversations. So I think as a next step, if at least we can go to that point, and then we can come back to the board and say, it's going to work or it's not going to work. And based on that, that's when we know, are we going forward with a conceptual design for Five to Seven West? Or are we going forward with a larger person?
Yes, chair, and just to piggyback on to what the town manager said is, if we think that it may be hopeful that we could come to a purchase price, and I, I have not actually had this conversation with Julie, so if I'm not correct, please tell me. But I just, I know we want to make sure we get it right tonight. But as I understand it, if, if we, if the board says, yes, we would like the town manager to enter into a negotiation, great that we're not going to come up with numbers. But if, if Mr. Perro says, yes, I think I would be interested in selling that, then in order for us to get a firmer number, we would have to have Tekton do a conceptual design of the project as if we were going to take Perro's. Now, if for some reason the, the negotiation fell through or a town meeting voted it down or whatever, we haven't committed dollars to the architectural design because the conceptual designs are different from architectural. So the conceptual is where the money would be spent. Because I really think in my mind, that's what we need to show town meeting, is we need to have the board that says, this is what we're looking to build by purchasing the Perro's property. And this is what we're asking you to fund. And if for some reason that doesn't work, and then we subsequently have to do it on West Street alone, then we would move to architectural drawings. Is that a fair statement? So, so even though the negotiation may not be worked out, the conceptual designs will be as if we hope to purchase the property.
All right, and I hate silly questions because I'm sure you guys discussed this. And I don't know if it would address your space concerns. if it would address your space concerns, but to, because we have, I'm hearing Lux has this option for a strike or refusal. Is there an easement option for access to Southbridge or to Route 12? Or would that still not address your spatial concerns?
So it doesn't necessarily address the spatial concern, but however, the town does own an easement in between the Mason's property and Lux Auto. So regardless of whether or not the building, regardless of whether we're able to purchase Lux, there will be a driveway. At a minimum, there will be a driveway access for emergency vehicles at least to go to Southbridge Street.
All right. And with that, do we have a vote to authorize further negotiations?
Make that motion.
Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Motion and a second, Mr. Carpenter?
I'll abstain.
Ms. Roofley?
Yes.
Mr. Chambers?
Yes.
And the chair is a yes. So that is a vote. Thank you very much. Have a good night.
Mr. Chair, I know this is a really large agenda tonight. I just want to acknowledge, while the police chief is still here, he has one very brief item coming up. And then I know Sheila Conroy is also here and Colin Novick is also here. So I apologize, we're trying to get through this as quickly as possible. So if we could go to six G, if someone would possibly do that, then the chief could get going if he has to. I'm just waiting for his phone to go off, so he has to leave.
I'll make a motion to move up agenda item six G.
Second. Mr. Carpenter?
Yes.
Ms. Roofley?
Yes.
Mr. Chambers?
Yes.
And the chair is a yes.
Thank you. And also, obviously, I mentioned to the chair also, we have DPW here also, so we want to make sure that we get them in and out too. We're just trying to go through some of the resident issues and then we can take that one out of order, if you would also. So Chief Lemon came to me the other day with a story. I don't know if you want to just briefly speak to it or do you want me to, but we are looking for a proclamation from the board to acknowledge a hero per se, who also happens to be a resident, who got involved in a situation that was, could potentially have been.
Hi, good evening. So I know it's been a long meeting for everyone. I'll try to keep to the Reader's Digest version, but back on July 31st, we had a very violent robbery that happened at the Shell Station. Maybe some of you have watched it on the news. And there was two female clerks that were working at the Shell Station across from Bentley Pub. And at 7:05 in the morning on a Sunday, this good citizen from town drove up upon this robbery and assault where this individual, this man violently attacked both these women and injured them significantly. And we believe that because he intervened and, have they seen the letter? Okay. So I just wasn't sure if they saw the letter. So we truly believe that he prevented them from being further injured or worse. And after talking with my investigators, we felt it was incumbent to at least recognize this good citizen of Auburn who intervened because the police can't do it themselves all the time. We really depend on our citizens to stand up and do the right thing, and he did. And I had asked Julie if we could bring this before the board so we can recognize him in more of an official capacity, which is the request I had before you.
So per the board's policy, I believe this would be likely, the policy is a proclamation, thanking him. And then what we'd like to do is have the chief bring this gentleman in to your next meeting where you could actually present the proclamation and we can prepare it. Say we, Sharon does a great job preparing it on your behalf if you vote for it and then publicly give him the proclamation.
This is a wonderful proclamation. Thank you for bringing it to us. And just a moment of personal privilege, if I may, Mr. Chambers. I hope, Chief Lemon, you will follow your predecessor, Chief Stone's habit of coming to the committees yourself and not sending the deputy or the lieutenants. We'd like to hear from you directly about your department, or I would, whether the others want to or not. I'm sure they do.
I'll make every effort to be here.
If there's no discussion, I will make a motion that we issue the proclamation as outlined in our.
Second. Mr. Carpenter?
Yes.
Ms. Roofley?
Yes.
Mr. Chambers?
Yes.
And the chair is a yes. Thank you, sir. Chair, thank you very much.
For your night. What was the next item? Six E? Okay. I'll make a motion to move up agenda item six E. Second.
Mr. Carpenter, excuse me?
Yes.
Ms. Roofley?
Yes.
Mr. Chambers?
Yes.
The chair is a yes. Moved up, item six E.
Thank you. This is under the Board of Selectmen item, but I just want to give you just a very brief background on it. You have a letter in your packet from Town Council. We received a request from Ms. Conroy back in February about renaming a portion of Water Street from Southbridge Street up to Oxford Street, Veterans Way, currently called Water Street, renaming it to Veterans Way. And the question came out, what is the policy? What is the, what is the procedure for renaming an existing road? So Town Council did a lot of research and basically, we don't have a policy per se. There's a number of different ways to interpret it. Under the charter, town roads and all town property. So town manager could come up with a policy and the town manager could be the authorizing of. Or we could go to town meeting, in town meeting, which is how Brother Tim Way was named. Or, and I would say and/or, the board may want to consider, not necessarily for this request, but for future requests, coming up with a policy and perhaps the board would be the authority to rename streets. And then you could hold a hearing, listen to interested parties, we could come up with rules and regulations regarding that. Attorney Hennigan provided a couple. Tonight's, tonight's request, we have given Sheila the various options available and the shortest one and seems the one that Sheila would like to pursue would be to ask the board to sponsor a warrant article to rename it. And I think that could happen simultaneous to us looking at a policy to bring before you so in the future you have a renaming policy. We do have a street naming policy, but this is a renaming policy. So is that summarized?
I had, I just brought that copy of that letter that I sent back in February along with some information, reason why the family's looking to change it to Veterans Way. This was a, we're seeking, Paul Frost has helped us with renaming the bridge, the northbound 290, to rename it after my Uncle Robert Conroy who was killed in Ruwa Two. That is right now on the governor's desk, so we're waiting for that approval, which has taken since March of '21. And then I'm sure people have seen the monument on the corner of my family and my cousins from Vietnam. So we just kind of thought it was in keeping to change that section of Water Street since it didn't have any residents on it, that it would, you know, be in keeping with the veterans' corridor, just to make that Veterans Way as the bridge will be hopefully soon renamed or named and then our monument at the base of the street. So that was the reason for our request here to change that to Veterans Way.
Well, as you can see, and I believe I had sent you all an email on it just to give you some background, but there are no residents that have an address on the property. There's no businesses that have an address. And I believe you were looking at, just, there was a question through the assessor's office as to whether the owners of one of the parcels was actually the state or potentially the Conroy family. But that's, again, there's no one residing there and there's no business there. So this wouldn't impact anyone's change of address or change of name or, it would just be that one section. So if the board did want to do this, Sheila's letter, yes.
And there's the documentation from the, from Paul Frost.
Okay. The second page is different from the one that happened. So the board, if the board decides, you could vote to sponsor a warrant article and we can work with that. Policy, we can start working on that too.
All right. Yes. Can we start with the, do we have any questions or questions? All right. I think let's start with the sponsorship of a warrant article and the policy.
I make a motion that we sponsor a warrant article for the, for the next town meeting, I read, will be in October.
Yes. This, we took this out of order, but your vote coming up after this would be for the town meeting, so yes.
Sheila, we'll expect a nice letter to the board that we got it done quicker than the, than the full-time staff at the State House.
Yes.
Renaming said.
And also, I wanted to say, we are having a dedication of the monument on November 12th and we certainly will be inviting all you folks to attend that.
Motion and a second, Mr. Carpenter?
Yes.
Ms. Roofley?
Yes.
Mr. Chambers?
Yes.
And the chair is a yes. Okay.
Do we have the discussion?
Yes.
Okay. I, I'm in favor of going to town meetings for renaming. So I think this process falls something that I would look for in the future. I mean, the rest of the town government gives the largest pool without going to the board is very difficult. But they have, elect the town.
The Town Council suggested that if that's the route that the board was the most comfortable with, which is the way it has been done, that you still may want to have a policy that that's done. So when someone does ask, there are still three options. So if that is the board's preference, you adopt a policy that says, a request would be made for a town meeting warrant article to go to town meeting, then that would be part of your policy. It doesn't necessarily, without the policy, we will run into this every time we get a request. There are three different mechanisms. A town manager could say that they wanted to be the authority and could under the charter. The Board of Selectmen at the time could say that they want to be the authority and could. So I think if that's the pleasure of the board, that you may want to consider a policy, just, you don't have to make that decision tonight, but just for something to think about in the future, to make it clear that that would be the policy of choice. That has been the practice, it's just not a policy.
My preference would be, let's put this on another agenda and give ourselves time to think about it and we might have more questions that we can ask. I'm not ready to do it tonight.
Julie, can I ask, how often does this happen?
That's a great question through the chair. I've been here, this is my 12th year, this is the first request that I've been through. So not very often at all. And we just felt badly because we couldn't give a single answer to Ms. Conroy because there isn't. There were three options and we had to tell her what those three options were. If, it doesn't happen, happen often at all. Even when I was in the city of Worcester for 20 years, I just remember a handful of requests. But unfortunately, some of those requests were more complicated because it involved businesses that were already located at a property that had to do a lot of work to change their mailing, their billing, their business cards, their identification. So this is one of the easiest ones that I've seen in my years of seeing these, but this is also the first one that I've seen here. Brother Tim Way happened before I got here.
Thank you.
So you don't need to take any action of anything because the only one that's, is on the agenda tonight is the vote from Ms. Conroy. So if that's all set, then, thank you.
Thank you very much, everyone.
Would you want to, for one meeting or do you want to? Keep this on October.
We'll put, we'll, we'll put something on in October. There, there's no rush on our end either because it's just, you know, we'd have to do the research and we certainly don't want to go through the process of doing any more research. We started to do a little. We don't want to do more if that's not what the board wants. So through the chair, if I may ask, Colin Novick is here for item seven E.
Seven E.
And then do you?
Agenda item seven E.
Second. Mr. Carpenter?
Yes.
Ms. Roofley?
Yes.
Mr. Chambers?
Yes.
And the chair is a yes. All right. So next up is agenda item seven E, discussion and possible vote on the Greater Worcester Land Trust request for a conservation restriction on a small parcel of land. It owns off Paketchog Street in Auburn and Ellie Way in Worcester, as shown on a plan entitled Plan of Project Survey for Joseph E. Panarelli Jr., Marie G. Panarelli, Ellie Way, Worcester, Mass., prepared by Jarvis Land Survey.
Thank you. Through the chair, we're thrilled and thank you for waiting, Colin. Colin Novick, the executive director of the Greater Worcester Land Trust, had approached me maybe a month or so ago with this request. And we did run it by our Town Council and as did Greater Worcester Land Trust on the process. And it is the Board of Selectmen's authority to grant the CR on a parcel. We did go to the Conservation Commission just as a courtesy to ask them to weigh in and look at it from a conservation perspective and make their recommendation, which they did, and that letter is in your packet, but the Conservation Commission voted to, to recommend that the board approve that this CR. So with that being said, I just, if you don't mind, Colin, could you just give just a brief overview of what the project is?
Sure. It's a half-acre site that is on Paketchog Street where it switches over at the town line to Worcester to College Street. It is part of the Paketchog Spring Site, which was the center of one of the Nipmuck villages of this area. There were three primary Nipmuck villages, one on Astabumsket, one on Quinsigamond, and one on Paketchog. Paketchog is believed to probably be the largest. This site is actually called out in the Auburn Open Space and Recreation Plan, Section 3.2. And it is an opportunity, as this particular section of town is slowly being built up with housing, to make sure that there's a small piece that remains of this historic and cultural spot. It was involved in everything from not only the indigenous population, but it was also part of the King Phillips War. A number of historic individuals from Massachusetts, Daniel Gookin, preacher John Elliott, who figure prominently in colonial history, were physically present at that site and are documented at being at that site. So we are partnering with the Quinsigamond Band of Nipmuck to protect it. However, they only have their Massachusetts Chapter 180 nonprofit status, so the conservation restriction submitted to town that is submitted to you has an interim holder, which would be the East Quabon Land Trust, to hold it until they were able to get their federal IRS 501(c)(3) status squared away. That being said, if you are able and willing to help by approving the conservation restriction, the Greater Worcester Land Trust and the Quinsigamond Band of Nipmuck would be available to receive grant funding from the State Executive Office Environmental Affairs, Division of Conservation Services, which would make this process and this protection possible. We've been partnering with individuals who are associated with the Auburn Historical Society, with Holy Cross, as well as Quinsigamond Band of Nipmuck, and we believe that this is a great opportunity to realize one of the things that's called out in your own open space and recreation plan. It's also a funny site because it's half in Worcester and half in Auburn, so we had to get permission from everybody twice. So you are the last stop on this train. All the other signatures, all the other approvals have happened, and here we are. Thank you.
Thank you.
I would also thank you, Colin. I would also say we're the smallest portion of this site. It's about 20, 15, 20% of the, of the total. But it sounded like an exciting project and Town Administration, we looked at it too and thought that that was a great idea.
People are interested, do you still have the film that you worked with Holy Cross on the Greater Worcester?
Absolutely. The film, Paketchog Where the River Bends, is still on YouTube and also is on the Holy Cross website, and that provides sort of a primer for folks as to the importance of the site. It's also fun because we've been trying to protect a portion of the site for over a decade now. And honestly, the film and the energy that were captured by that got us to the point we're able to protect part of the site. So that film that you mentioned is why we're all here today. We finally have a chance to protect some small portion of that. There may be other opportunities in the future, but right now, this is the way in, this is the public access, and it gets you to a historic spot.
Do we have a motion?
Motion, we accept the conservation restriction as outlined in our agenda.
Second. Mr. Carpenter?
Yes.
Ms. Roofley?
Yes.
Mr. Chambers?
Yes.
And the chair is a yes. It is a vote. Thank you, sir.
I happen to have the legal document, which has the page that would be signed by the chair of the select board with me. the chair of the select board with me, so I'll just leave that with you guys.
We'll get it back to you, that's great.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
That's the one that does all the signatures, so please don't lose it.
How many signatures are required on it? Is it just one?
Just the chair.
If it's just one, if you want to do that right now and wait, we'll give it back to you, and then we're not responsible. Oh, it's going to be notarized, I'm sorry. Okay. Sounds good. Through the chair, while you're signing that, I would ask the board to consider moving up two items, because those would be the last. People who have been patiently waiting here, our employees, our DPW director, and assistant DPW director, so while he's doing that, if we could move up items 7B and then 7C, they're here for both of those.
Boss, the chair.
So.
I'll make the motion, but he's.
Yeah, you have to wait, yeah. I, I just thought I'd let you know that those were the two. The first one is on ARPA dollars, and the second one is on the DPW paving plan.
Well, absolutely. We need habitat value, like nobody's business. Agenda item, make a motion to move up agenda item, what were? 7B and 7C. Second.
Second, Mr. Carpenter?
Yes.
Ms. Roofley?
Yes.
Mr. Chambers?
Yes.
And the chair is a yes. Okay, so we're taking agenda item 7B first?
Great, thank you, yes. If it's okay to you, I'd like to ask Nick Schwartz, our assistant DPW director and sewer superintendent, to come up with us, and I just grabbed a, for one second. So in your packets, you have a memo from me on our request. We are coming back to you this evening for a request for a million dollars in ARPA funding for the Warren Road Pump Station. And I put together this memo based on the discussion that we had the last meeting, and there were some questions from board members, and we just wanted to make sure everyone had the appropriate information. I know it didn't pass, it, it was a split vote of 2-2, so nothing happened on it. So following that meeting, we went back and we met, and Nick did a great job, as you can see, putting together some information in here. Then we received, a member had reached out with some more specific questions, so we went back to Nick again, and he again sat down and went through and did a great job detailing the need for this project. Why do we need it? Why is it critical? How did we base the costs? What was the mechanism he used to come up with those costs? And we're here again tonight because we feel we've given you all the information. This has been a priority of ours since ARPA dollars first came to light about a year ago. I remember sitting here last fall, saying that Warren Road Pump Station was going to likely be a priority, we just wanted to make sure we had all the numbers, we looked at other things that we needed, but we knew that that was something we needed. If we can't use the ARPA dollars, and that's certainly up to the board, our intent would be that we're going to have to go to town meeting to get a warrant article to fund it, because the project needs to be done. So we're trying to find the best way to mitigate the impact on the ratepayers and on the taxpayers. And ARPA dollars would do that, because we wouldn't have to raise the rates or go to town meeting and get additional funding through the sewer enterprise. So again, it, it remains a priority for us. I asked Nick to be here this evening to kind of ask any, excuse me, answer any questions that you may have on his methodology, but I think, I think the memo was pretty specific. He did a great job on the cost analysis. I would say, and I think all the engineers you've spoken to have said it, it's the best estimate we're going to come up with, but we won't know until we go to bid. None of our projects will, we know. I will tell you this, the projects are going up and up and up, so the longer we wait, the more expensive the project could be. I, I don't, none of us is seeing that prices are going to come down. We're not seeing demand for engineering services coming down, if anything, it's going up. All these ARPA dollars being available, there's more projects, there's more money flowing, there's more need to get the projects in the pipeline quickly, so everyone's scrambling and going after the same engineering firms to get the work done. So it's, it's going to be very competitive to get a project out there. The board had asked if we could put, if we could go and just do the design and not put it out to bid, and the answer is yes, we can, under ARPA funds, you can do that. We would not just do the design, we would, because I think that's a waste of money, and we need the project, so if we did that, we would do the design, and then we'd still have to have a warrant article on there as a placeholder to fund the project. But it could be done where you just vote ARPA dollars, and then we go for town meeting for the rest of the money. I think the other question was, can we put out a bid without having the money in place to sign the contract? We cannot sign the contract, that's, we said that last time, that's confirmed, we, you can't enter into a contract unless the dollars are in place. So we would be putting out a bid that was a conditional bid, which again, we recommended against that last time, I strongly recommend it against it again. If there's that much competition for engineering firms in the state right now, statewide, and I tell you, even beyond the state, but here in the state, this competition, if the dollars aren't available, and the project may or may not go forward, the engineering firm's going to be less, excuse me, the contractor will be less likely to bid on it, because they don't, it, it costs money to put a bid. It costs money, you've got to get insurance bonds, you've got to fill out all kinds of paperwork for the state, for the, it's expensive to bid, they're not going to put in for a bid when there's work ready that has been funded. So yes, we can do it, we don't advise, we advise against doing it, town council advised against doing it, felt that conditional bids like that just don't generate any interest. And you know, case in point, look what happened with the bid that we put out for land for the joint public safety facility, it's conditional upon a bid, excuse me, it's conditional upon a vote and of town meeting and of the public at a vote, and no one bid on it. In a hot market like this, they don't need to do a conditional sale to us, because if they really want to sell, they could sell. So I think it's the same case with the engineers. If, if it's a conditional bid to, not engineers, but contractors, if we get a contractor, reliable firm to come in, they're not going to want to bid, not knowing the project's going to go forward. But those are the answers, it, it, yes, it can be done. So Nick, did you want to add anything to it, or you just want to wait for questions? It's up to you.
No, I don't think I have anything to add based off of what you just said, Julie, and my description of the project at a last meeting, but if there's additional questions, I'm happy to answer those.
Thank you for the additional work you put in on that, that was, I think you answered all the questions, at least as they were related to me from the other board members, so I thank you for that. Do we have any further questions, guys?
It's not a question, but a comment. So with the additional detail, I think that helps with the decision. Also, I appreciate you getting the answer. So if, if we get the information, then there's no need to do conditional stuff, but without information, I would be inclined to propose that in the future, so just if we get the information, I think that helps make decisions easier, so thank you. Thank you for the additional work, and I have nothing further.
No, I, I, you're okay voting on it.
All right, do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion to a million dollar ARPA funds for the pump station.
Do we have a second?
Seconding reluctantly, because I wanted to make the first motion, Sarah.
I was just trying to keep it easy.
Mr. Carpenter?
Yes.
Ms. Roofley?
Yes.
Mr. Chambers?
Yes.
And the chair is a yes. It is a vote.
Thank you, thank you, we.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. And Nick, thank you for all the work that you put into this, and Joanna, obviously, too. Last week, we, we really put Nick through it, getting some additional information, so we appreciate it.
Not a problem at all.
Thank you for your consideration.
Moving on to the fiscal year 2023 paving plan?
Yes, so the next item is, as we do, I think, I think you're all new other than Mr. Carpenter, who is here, but every year, we come before the board. You were, right? Yeah. We come before the board and just show you what the plan is for the paving for the upcoming season. The bids, come on up, Joanna, Joanna, Pekruna, DPW director is here. The bids are going in the central register for the work on Wednesday. You have to submit it a couple of weeks before, so we're here to just, before it goes to the bid, just show you what streets we have. And I'll just summarize, and then again, Joanna, add in, but as every year, DPW evaluates every single street in town. They drive every street, some of the streets they've actually walked, and they come up, they have a, a mechanism for, for prioritizing what streets need to be done every year. And the former DPW director always said it, and I know Joanna says it now, we don't promise residents that if they're not on the list this year, they're going to be on it next year, because we don't know what circumstances could happen. We could have a sinkhole, we could have a flooding situation, we could have, something happen where a street that we thought we could get to next year falls lower on the list, because we have something that's critical that arose. But these are the streets that DPW plans on doing, when I say this construction season, if, again, we're running into problems with, you know, everyone, there's a labor shortage, a supply shortage. If we can get the bids in, if they can start the work, if they have the labor to do it, if they have the equipment to do it and supplies to do it, hopefully, they could maybe start in the fall. Generally, they do some work in the fall and then finish it up in the spring. So this is being funded through basically four different sources. It's our Chapter 90 funds, which are about $600,000 every year. It's the towns' tax levy dollars that are in the operating budget, we're back to $525,000 a year. And I would tell you that that's unique to most communities, some communities do have the money to do this, most communities just use the Chapter 90 funds. We've been fortunate, the board and town meetings always made roads a priority, we believe roads are a priority, so we always put extra dollars in. In addition, this year, one time only, there's $300,000 of a grant that we had brought to the board that we received, it was a winterization grant that the state released extra money, and it was a formal base, so that 300 is in it, as well as some stormwater. And I think I'll turn to Joanna to explain, but just to summarize it, what we were able to do last year, we can do half as much this year, due to the increased costs. That's, that's the kind of impact that we're seeing on this, is it, it's crazy, the prices are just crazy. We used to, you know, do a, this is your average cost per road mile, this is your average, what we get for the money, it's completely, it's, it's gone upside down this year. And we're not the only community facing that. But Joanna, do you want to explain the, the streets and what's going to be done?
So like Julie said, we've been able to do a lot more roads in previous years than, than this year, just because of the, the rising costs. So for this contract, we're looking to pave Brook Street from Riverside to Melbury Townline, Brenmore Ave between Briar Cliff and Lester Street, Rock Ave from Oster Street North to Brenmore Ave, Eastford Road, Harder Road, Harder Drive, and White Oak Street, it's a little neighborhood off of mine. And so, yeah, it's basically, we looked at all the, all the priorities, all the roads, we actually were hoping to get more done. We, prior to putting the, the bid together, we have, we, you know, I used to walk the road to, to measure out, to get a, a list of quantities, to get a cost estimate, our engineer, Brian, is, is now doing that. And, and he, he did the, the cost estimate, and we, we actually had to cut down the list of streets just because of the rising costs. I don't know if you have any questions?
The chair, I should mention that as town managers, our group, and through the MMA, we lobby very hard to get additional Chapter 90 dollars each year. I've gone to several public hearings on it, I've spoken, I've testified, I've participated when I was on the LGAC, which is the Local Government Advisory Council. I spoke to this item at least once a year to the Lieutenant Governor. Every time, they said, okay, Julie Jacobson's going to speak to Chapter 90, I, I just know they knew what I was going to say, but the good thing is, we, we have an excellent roadway reconstruction plan, and a couple of years ago, we were asked to speak, Bill Coyle and I, the former DPW, were asked to speak to the Lieutenant Governor and her cabinet about our plan, because it is unique, it is aggressive, we do put in extra dollars each year that almost match the amount that the state's giving us, which is, is unusual. Some communities do that, but again, most don't do that. We've made it a priority. We, we have a good plan, we have a plan to reconstruct the roads over a 20-year period. We've made a lot of progress in the last nine years, it's going to continue. Weather events, you know, they are getting worse, we're, we're seeing droughts, I wish we were seeing some more rain this year, but we've seen some flooding conditions that we hadn't seen in the past, so certain roadways that initially on the plan eight years ago may not have risen to the top, have had to be moved up. But we will continue to try to lobby to get additional state funding, we think it's important. The state has been level funded at $200 million statewide for at least four years, one year, maybe six years ago, they did add another $100 million to it. So we keep, we keep advocating for 300 million instead of 200. I would tell you, for us, if we get, we get $600,000 a year from the state approximately, we used to say we would need 2.5 million from the state every year, just to do the roads over 20 years, not even to do them now. That price has probably doubled. If we needed 2.4 last year, now we need 5 million every year. So there's a crying need for more Chapter 90 funds statewide, and it's important that we all continue to lobby for that. It's, it's critical dollars coming in for our roadways, infrastructure.
Any questions, Joanna? This is just for maintenance, it's not for improvements, is that what, like, we're looking to add or make complete streets and reshape the roads and drainage and all that?
So anytime that we, we, we reconstruct a road, if, if it's a full reconstruction, then we, we reconstruct the sidewalks along with it. There are other, in the past, we've been able to, you know, mill and overlay a road, which, you know, maybe it, it doesn't go as, as extensive as the reconstruction, but typically, that's one of the things that we look at. We look at the sidewalks, we look at the drainage, and whatever improvements that we need to make, we make that at that time. So as far as complete street goes, we do have a prioritization plan that was approved by Mass DOT, so we definitely refer to that. And the list of roads that we have today before you, they, it's not listed on the prioritization plan. But anytime that we reconstruct a road, we'd, we would reconstruct the sidewalks. I'm not sure, a few years ago, we implemented also adding handicap ramps for any intersections, as well as the truncated domes for the visually impaired. So we do.
Chair, on prioritization, I'm assuming every road becomes a priority at some point, but like, what do you consider prioritization, like is it 20% of roads, 5%?
So, in 2000, I'm not sure if it was 2016, or 2000, I'm not sure of the date, we had CMR PC look at the town overall, and basically look at what, what discrepancies we might have. So they, they looked at, they, they surveyed the entire town's sidewalks and handicap ramps and, and labeled those as, you know, whether they, you know, whether they needed to be reconstructed, whether they needed to have ramps insufficient, you know, too great of a slope. They, they recorded that in addition to any areas of town that they saw. Any areas of town that might be gaps in, in sidewalks. So that's, that's how the, the prioritization plan came to be.
I'm sorry, so none of these are yellow or red, they're all in the green according to that plan, or they're not even on the prioritization plan?
So these, the, so, I think the prioritization in general, they had handicap ramps, so these would probably have had listed the, the ramps, the reconstruction of the ramps, you know, along with the sidewalks, which we would do anyways. But their, their roads themselves aren't listed individually as needing to add sidewalks, you know, in addition to what's already out there, improvement, but not addition.
And through the chair, if I can clarify, the CMR PC study was primarily focused on sidewalks and handicap ramps, not road reconstruction.
Right.
So this is road reconstruction.
So, and that's, so we're not considering that as part of this, because it's not, and that's why, so this is maintenance, or?
This is road reconstruction, this is a part of a 20-year plan, that every year, we do certain streets, we started with the main arteries, and then we went to more secondary roads, and then we try to cluster the roads. And then we try to cluster the roads so that we're, you're not having a contractor come in and move their equipment from one side of town to the other because that's less cost effective. So you try to cluster the roads and have them done in a general vicinity. That's a different set of criteria than the handicap ramps and the crosswalks.
More infrastructure separate.
Current is a warrant item. Might be a simple mine, but if you don't want to move them across town for that and we have an opportunity. I'm just thinking, again, if we can use the funds ARPA-wise to correct any deficiencies while they're there, there might be some economies on that. And I know we discussed a couple of times, and I was on the planning board at the same time. And I thought, maybe I didn't understand the whole process. But when you see construction going on and then people say, yeah, but the sidewalks weren't included, that doesn't correct the issues if there are any. So I'm just, is there an ability to overlap or get additional?
So right now, there's no additional funding from the state for sidewalks. You can use your Chapter 90, which we do use it for sidewalks. If we were to say, take the same streets that we have been doing and the ones that we're proposing. If now you wanted to add sidewalks to those streets that don't currently have it, that's another additional cost of upwards of 60% more.
So I did a quick calculation. So like I said, the roads that we're doing now, we're going to be reconstructing and we're going to, you know, so they're going to be part of complete streets. For us to add sidewalks to any road that we're reconstructing, it's about $200,000 per mile, not counting handicap ramps, because it would depend on how many cross streets you would need. That would be the number of handicap ramps that we would need to add. In addition to, if you're redesigning a road to add sidewalks, now you're adding curbing, you're widening, so you're looking at right-of-way issues or grading or temporary easements or land takings, as well as if you're putting in berm or curbing along a roadway, now you're modifying the stormwater. So in roads that don't have any curbing and you have water flowing off the side of the road and infiltrating into the ground, now you have to capture it and install additional stormwater infrastructure. So there is, on top of the $200,000 per mile for the, just the pure construction cost of the sidewalk, you would be looking at the stormwater aspects of it and additional costs. So it would take more planning. So that's why we would be going by the prioritization plan and looking at the roads that, you know, we have deficiencies in, or the sidewalks that we have deficiencies in. But our complete streets policy basically dictates that we look at each road that we are reconstructing and in conversations with the town manager, if practicable or if practical, we would be adding those sidewalks. So we're.
So in these streets, there's nothing additional needed?
So in these streets, we're reconstructing, so Brenmore Ave, we would be reconstructing the sidewalk as well as, I believe it's part of White Oak and Eastford. So there is a sidewalk that goes from Vine Street to Oxford Street North that would be reconstructed. So that path would be reconstructed as part of this project.
Sorry if I didn't ask the right question. That's what I was trying to get at. Sidewalks are included if they're there, you're just not building new. Thank you. So that's what, I just wanted to make sure that what we are maintaining, it's bringing it up if it needs it. Sorry, that was very confusing and I'm not looking to drag the meeting on, but I have my answers. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Joanna. So this will go out to bid in the central register on Wednesday?
With the bid opening date, I believe it's.
Thank you. Thank you so much for taking that out of order. It's appreciated.
No problem. I know that we helped them very much.
If you go back on your agenda.
Yeah, we're going back to 6C. So we have requested from the town clerk to change the owner of the owner name and billing address information on the flammable storage permit at 780 Washington Street, Auburn, Mass. So we would need a motion to change the owner's billing address information to GPI MA-F Inc., VA Ira Ford, Auburn, 780 Washington Street in Auburn. I don't believe we have a present for that.
Correct. This is just generally, it's a change of an address. It's more of an administrative matter.
Do we have any questions? Do we have a motion? So moved. Move in a second. Mr. Carpenter?
Yes.
Ms. Ruthley?
Yes.
Mr. Chambers?
Yes.
The chair is a yes, it is a vote. Okay, moving on to agenda item 60. We have the select board to vote on our fall town meeting schedule. And with that, I'll give it to Ms. Jacobson.
Thank you. We, in discussions with the town clerk, the moderator, and attorney Henigan, and obviously Ed being sure that we would have the information we need from Department of Revenue with regards to certification and the assessors office being sure they're ready. We've all come to the conclusion that October 18th would be a good date to have this meeting. The town clerk had requested that as opposed to one week later because she didn't want to bump up against the upcoming election in November. So it was a fair request. So we're asking you to schedule the fall town meeting for October 18th at 6:00 PM, which is the time we've been starting them for the last few years. The second vote we're asking for will be to open the warrant this evening and to close it on September 9th, which is, you know, almost three weeks. In anticipation of this, Ed did ask Sharon about three weeks ago to notify all the important department heads that this would be likely voted on this evening. So they actually had a six-week notice of when we're looking to open and close the warrant and they can notify the boards and commissions as well.
Do we have any questions?
Yes. Historically, have there been items that come in after that three-week window?
Chair, no, it's really, I can't say it's never happened, but it would only happen if it was coming from a source that wasn't aware of this. We notify all the boards and commissions. We generally have a fall town meeting either the third or the fourth week in October. Since I've been here, it's never been any different than that. I think we added one once, a special town meeting for a land purchase, but that's always the time. So everyone kind of knows that that's the routine. And then we do notify all the chairs of the boards and commissions. So they're aware too that there's a fall town meeting coming.
A motion? Make a motion that we schedule the special town meeting for Tuesday, October 18th, 2022, at 6:00 PM. Second? Second. Mr. Carpenter?
Yes.
Ms. Ruthley?
Yes.
Mr. Chambers?
Yes.
Chair is a yes. All right, moving on to item number two under 60, vote to open the warrant.
So moved.
Second. Mr. Carpenter?
Yes.
Ms. Ruthley?
Yes.
Mr. Chambers?
Yes.
Close on Friday the 9th.
So moved.
Second. Mr. Carpenter?
Yes.
Ms. Ruthley?
Yes.
Mr. Chambers?
Yes.
And the chair is a yes. Okay, and that brings us to agenda item 6F. We have two gift acceptances that were in your packets. First, we have one for fire and rescue.
Vote to accept with gratitude.
Second. Mr. Carpenter?
Yes.
Ms. Ruthley?
Yes.
Mr. Chambers?
Yes.
Yes, and moving on to the $5,000 for K-9 gift accounts.
Make a motion that we accept with gratitude and let a letter be prepared for the chair's signature.
Second, Mr. Carpenter?
Yes.
Ms. Ruthley?
Yes.
Mr. Chambers? Chair is a yes, it is a vote. All right, moving on to town manager items, we have.
I think three in our packet.
What is it, three?
I have one from Mr. Delw. I have one from Massamin. Both for fire and then.
The total is 300.
Yeah, they were, they combined it.
So the 300.
Oh, gotcha. Okay, perfect.
Yep, so you're right, there are three.
Does that vote suffice?
Yes.
All right, moving on to agenda item 7A. That is the vote to accept and spend $27,000 from Hazard Mitigation Grant Program to update the town of Auburn's Hazard Mitigation Plan. Total project cost at $30,000 with a $3,000 in kind local share.
Thanks. To the chair, I came before the board, I think it might have been mid-April, to put an application in for funding to update our hazard plan, which is not due to expire for another, at this point, maybe 15, 16 months. But the state encourages us to apply for these dollars because they come from FEMA and they encourage us to kind of get in the pipeline. So I got it in early. We tried one round and didn't get that. Another round came up, so we submitted. At that round, they were looking for a 20%, a 25% match. So it's still a $30,000 project and we were required to put in 25% of it. Since that time, and that's what the board voted, since that time, FEMA has revised their qualifications for the program because they had additional monies to spend. So now they're only requiring a 10% match. So we were given the opportunity to reduce our match requirement from 25 to 10. This is an in-kind match, meaning no cash dollars. This is our staff time. Honestly, we could have met the 25% also because there's a lot of staff time that goes into it. So we were going to be able to meet it. From tracking purposes, 10% is a lot easier to track than 25%. So you have to submit the names of the staff who's working, the hourly rates. They have to track how many hours they work on the grant. There's a lot to it. So a 10% is a little easier for us. So I'm just here for a revision because I just wanted you to know our share now is only 3,000. It was higher before. The grant application is still pending. I'm hoping that we got it and that would give us the opportunity to start maybe over the coming year to update it. So by the time it expires, we'll be well into the process if not done.
Do we have any questions of the board members? Seeing none, do we have a motion?
Motion that we vote to and expend $27,000 from the hazardous mitigation grant program to update the town's hazardous mitigation plan.
Moving in a second. Mr. Carpenter?
Yes.
Ms. Ruthley?
Yes.
Mr. Chambers?
Yes.
The chair is a yes, it is a vote.
Thank you very much.
Moving on to agenda item 7F, the update on the national opioid litigation settlements.
Through the chair, there is a memo in your packet that I gave you on this and I also sent it to you in advance. There's a lot of information here. Just in general, as you know, the town is part of a national opioid litigation. And a settlement was reached with three of the largest pharmaceuticals, which are all collectively called the distributors with capital D. Then another pharmaceutical, which is J&amp;J. And the terms of both of those settlements are different. So the terms under the distributors, all three of them have the same settlement terms. There's a separate one for J&amp;J. So as part of this, we had to fill out information, set up an account with the law firm that's handling this on a national basis. And we did that. We received our first payment from one of the suits, from the distributor suit. We're anticipated to receive the other payment shortly. I would just tell you that it's a complicated schedule, as you can see. I just put in your packet, it's just the page on Auburn because I think, I didn't think you needed to see the entire state, but the link is there if you want to see the entire state. It is based on a formula. And the more communities that agree to accept this, then they can start defining the numbers. Right now, it's an estimate. They anticipate it's pretty close because we don't really expect any community to opt out at this point. If they opted out, I believe there'd be more funding to be distributed. But pretty much if you're in, you're in. 80 to 90% of the communities in Massachusetts are participating in this. So all told, between now and 2038, which is the last year of this settlement for these, we should be receiving about $600,000 and, let's call it $630,000 in various payments. So this year alone, we're still trying to reconcile because what was online on one site was a little different than the other site. So we participated in a number of webinars. But overall, we're going to get this year somewhere between probably 70 and 130 for this fiscal year. The funds right now are required under DOR to go into the general revenue fund. There's legislation pending that would allow us to establish a dedicated account just for this, but right now it goes into general revenues. But the use of the funds has to be targeted toward very specific things that are in the settlement agreement. So even though it goes to general fund revenues, it can't just be spent on anything. It has to be spent specifically to address conditions that have led to the opioid crisis or results of the opioid crisis. So treatment, prevention, education, medication, equipment for fire, for first responders, things like that. So we're still getting more information as we come. The payments are coming in. We will have to report. If you get more than $33,000, you have to file a quarterly report. So we'll be filing the quarterly reports on this. There could be more settlements coming, but this is just the start of it. So we will be working with the Board of Health to come up with recommendations on what the best use of the money is for the Auburn community. Where are the impacts the largest? What types of impacts have we had? And where are the needs the largest? Do we need more education? Do we need more outreach? Do we need more Narcan? Do we need more training? So there's a lot of different things that we have to look at. It's kind of happening quickly with the settlements because early in the spring, I think I notified you, in December, they had come to a settlement, but it wasn't until recently we're starting to actually get the details of that settlement. So we have plenty of time to do this. The dollars will be coming in over a regular period between now and 2038. So it is a good opportunity for us to utilize the money to try to address the crisis and hopefully prevent more overdoses and more deaths.
Thank you.
Questions?
I just have one. I know the school department, some years ago now, has a program. Are they going to be part of the mix in this discussion?
They absolutely should be. They did have a program. They, I believe, they most likely still have it, although with COVID, I don't know. That most likely interrupted. They used to have a speaker come in and speak to the kids at an early age about this. So they absolutely should be part of it. A lot of the education that our Board of Health does is through the school department anyway. So, yeah, we've got it, you know, it used to be said you had to hit the high school level, you know, with education. And now it's certainly, it goes down to our grammar school level. You've got to start very, very young. So absolutely, the school department already is offering services. My guess is they should be part of the conversation.
Moving on to not tabled items, so we're moving on to select board items. And we have discussion on the central creation of a student member or student liaison to the Board of Select. Mr. Carpenter?
I did have an update, but last meeting I was told Ms. Ruthley was not going to be here. So I will send that to you before the next meeting. There might be, some of these questions might need to be referred to Labor Council. I did contact the feds and the state attorney general's office. They gave me some guidance, but, you know, considering that the board is concerned about certain things, it's probably best to get certainty. As I, they will have to have a work permit. Thankfully, everything on the hazard list are only in Julie's office, like meat slices and things like that. So they won't be allowed in there. So we're not on any, thankfully, selectmen don't do anything hazardous, so there's nothing there. And the AG's office did say they would be restricted to the hours, which is three hours on a school night, so.
Through the chair, I also had reached out to the town of Charlton because Mr. Carpenter mentioned that they did that. And I'm waiting to get a little bit more information, but the town administrator got right back to me and basically said that it is a student representative that the schools choose. He said it's generally been someone from the student government and it's really a liaison type position. They attend all the meetings. They obviously are not voting, they're not voting members. They attend the meetings and they give updates to the board as to what's going on at the school. I asked him if he could try to find out from the school superintendent's office how the process works on that end. And that's, I don't have that information back yet. I know he's working on that for us. So I want to thank him for getting back to me and as soon as I get more information, I'll share it as well.
We'll keep this on for our next meeting as well?
I mean, I don't, I haven't even heard if anybody wants to do it yet. So I don't want to expend a lot of energy, both staff time, my time is a little cheaper at my burn rate of five cents an hour. So I can do certain things. They get paid a little more, so I don't mind doing it. But if the board is not. So I don't mind doing it, but if the board is not interested, then I would suggest that we speak now so that we can.
I, I don't have any concerns. I think it's worth keeping the conversation going forward. Do you have any thoughts on that, Mr. Chambers?
Um, I just want to confirm stated goals of this. It's, I mean, I see more engagement. Are there other goals stated?
Not for me. If the board has other things, again, this is a board decision. I'm just bringing it, it's something that I've been thinking about for a while. I had talked to Mr. Liberty about it some time ago. It fell off the plate, so I figured it's now or never. But certainly, I think it should reflect whatever the board thinks is appropriate. Um, and to me, I would like them to bring topics that they're concerned of. That, to me, is the value of it. Also, you know, I think it would be important, if, again, it would be the school department decision, if they had an election, much like the student government, but on the same day as we have it, to try and get people into the habit of recognizing we actually have annual elections, not biannual, and those are just extra. So that would be my goal. Whether that's something the board wants to entertain or has concerns about, I'm happy to hear them.
I agree. I am.
Yeah, I, I, I think just so long as we're clear that we're not opening the charter and making, adding a sixth member, I mean, which we're not.
We couldn't legally.
So I, I, I like the idea and if we're encouraging social advocacy to get involved, then I, you know, who, who can argue against that? So, all right, and does anyone have any amendments or concerns on the July 25th meeting minutes? Okay, seeing none, let's stay in and motion to adjourn.
Chairman, I have one other item.
Yes.
Um, actually, I have two items. Um, we do have an impending town manager. Um, we do need to start thinking about negotiating a contract with said person.
That's correct.
Um, so I would like to see something, what our timeline is for that, not tonight.
Okay.
I'm just bringing it up because it's been several months and it's important that we get that nailed down. And the other is a bit of a personal announcement that um I am not going to seek reelection to the board in the upcoming May election. I've been thinking about this for a long time. I think it's time for me to step off and somebody new to come in with some new ideas. And you know, I wish the board well. I wish the new town manager well in his duties. I will thankfully not have the onerous task of reviewing him, so I will leave before that. So, but I just wanted to make that known before people started thinking about running or not running. There will be an open seat in the May election.
Sir? And yes, the conversation have, have begun in regard to the um contracts.
With that, I will make a motion to adjourn.
Yeah, I don't know if someone is here.
Okay. Okay. Well, well, thanks for saying.
You picked a long one.
Second. And Mr. Carpenter?
Yes.
Ms. Ruthley?
Yes.
Mr. Chambers?
Yes.
And the chair votes yes, it is a vote. Good meeting, guys. Thank you.